Um, again, we, we can like example from what I'm saying now, operation man and look at examples. Let's assume that uh. Yeah, I believe my statement is wrong. Let's assume I have a, a juice factory now in Lagos. I want to, I have a juice factory. Yeah, and then what do I need? I need stuff like, I need the fruits, I need to buy, I need fruits for my juice factory. I need machines, I need workers, I need electricity, I need packaging, I need trucks that can distribute. Understand? Now, so operational management here can decide how to buy the food cheaply. Where can we get the food at a cheaper rate? How to produce juice fast? Understand? These are the things you consider in operational management. How to reduce the waste in production? Now, when you talk about waste, waste is can, waste can involve in, in the process. Right? So the process of producing the juice, how can we produce fast? Now, by the time you are trying to produce fast, remember, you may try to remove some waste in that. Now, waste is in so many forms. We have like, if you, if, if you go lean, if you go on the least sigma, you understand that we have eight type of wastes. We have eight type of waste. Think I can remember them when I do this. We have long time. Yeah, we have waste type of waste, we have defects. Understand? Defect is also waste. And then we have uh maybe over processing. Over processing is also waste. And then we have waiting time, you know the waiting. Waiting can be waste, waiting here is, it can be the time that the customer are waiting to get the juice, yeah? So that is another waste. And then we can have something like, uh, what is an end for? For known ahead, this, this could be known. Non-utilized, utilized talent. So it means I can, you imagine that somebody that's supposed to work in, imagine. Or known with like talent is could be someone that is, someone that is a security. Can actually manage your production line very well, but then this is a security is there? Or you don't give people the, 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 like, the required training. So the person may not really know what to do, it's just wasting our person where the person is. Understand? And another waste here, this is transportation. Transportation here talks about the pro- transportation of goods from one location to another. Right? From foreign, that is where if you want to, maybe you want to start a new production line. How, where can I put my plants? Where can I start my plant or my factory? Where can I get the raw materials? Is it going to be far or other? So you look at, that is another type of waste that I need to focus on. And then you can also look at inventory, right? Inventory is also a type of waste. And then, you know, they, they just check all these things. So, in, like, I was giving you an example of my factory of juice, my juice factory, right? So I say, I need fruit, I need machines, I need workers, I need electricity, there are so many things I will need. Right? So I need to manage these things. So, management, the operational management here, I'm going to decide, first of all, how can I get the food so cheap? How can I produce food so fast? How can I reduce waste? How to keep the juice quality high? You understand? How can I make cartons to produce by day? Like, how many cartons can I produce by day? Like, how many cartons of juice can I produce by day? You understand? So, we just, this are just like a refresh of that. And then we have a production basis. Let's see, we look at products, can we like kind of compare production and operations? Now, production management, it manages the process. It manages the process of making the physical product. That is production management. We're just trying to, so that you know, entering the whole thing. Now, the production management is the process of managing the, it just about managing the process of making a physical product. But when you say operational management, it includes even the production inside. It includes production plus management of services, everything together. And that's why when you're talking about like operation, we have uh operations, manufacturing op- operation and also service operations. So when I talk about manufacturing operations, we are looking at people like the dangote cement, it's producing, they are producing cement. And what are given to us that tangible product that we can see, tangible, something we can touch and feel it, right? And then we're looking at other ones like the service, uh, we also service operations, where people that give us service. Like the bank, like, let's say, G T Bank, savvy customers. You understand? This is intangible work, service product, we can see, we are, they are not seeing the service, right? But it's a kind of, you know, oppression is going on there. So they are giving us an experience, not a product per se. Did you get the point now? So that's, I think, they give us an assignment, even in my group, I mean, it was an individual assignment. To actually talk about manufacturing and service operations. I think there was an assignment like that. So we just learn something. So we just, hold on, so we look at the framework, if you go to the material, look at the framework of uh. The whole operation thing, we. It's somewhere here, can you see? This is what I'm just mentioning here. We are talking about distinguishing, distincts, distinct between uh, between, between, uh, between manufacturing operation and service operations. So an operation is defined in terms of the mission it serves, it serve for the organization. So we get, so we say operational management is a large segment which is concerned with the existence of any organization. So from down to this level, we are trying to differentiate, different like the manufacturing and service. He said the manufacturing is, is actually characterized by tangible output. Just like you were showed you, I gave you example of dangote cement, they are giving us tangible product. Like the cement, we see them, we touch the cement, right? But when you come to the service uh, uh, operation, we are looking at the, the intangible output. Now, the output here can just be customer consumption, you know, so I was talking about G T Bank, where they give us like experience. This house, this is an operation is going on, but it's not a tangible operation. So, we look at uh, the operation framework. That they gave us says, say we have like the, a framework of managing operation. We have the planning, we have the, we had the planning, organizing, and the other one, we have the control. Control and behavior and models. So we can see that, yeah, there even, so planning. Planning here is basically, it decides what to produce, how much and how. How do we produce this thing? What are we going to produce? That is planning. Right? So we now go to organizing, organizing here, it arranges the machines. Let's say, we, we want to arrange the machines and then the workers, the materials, everything. Do you understand? So for instance, in the planning here, I have a bake, a bakery shop, right, a bake store. Where, uh, at this point now. I want to, to, I'm planning that I want to produce like, uh, one thousand uh, bread. Do you understand? I want to, I want to, my plan is that, I want to produce one thousand bread every day. Right? So, but this is actually the plan. So now, with this plan, I can, if we are going to organizing here, I'm going to assign workers to shift. So for instance, in a day that, I can also, okay, if I have like five staff or maybe four staff. I can say everybody can now go to work at once, I can say, okay, I can decide, it's okay. Uh, two people go to manage shift and other people, this is like organizing. You understand? Anyhow, you want to organize, it's still on your own, right? So, watch more, but then you know that the framework here is about five, you can make it like, make it so easy for you to remember. Because you may see this question or, the question may come somewhere. And then it's be like this, so we can just, we have the five functions. The question, they can actually the functions of what operation? What are the functions of operation, operation that five? We forget that we are the writing framework, functions of operation. So we have the planning, we have the organizing, we have the controlling, and then we have the behavioral, we have the models. So, in the control now. The control here is checking if the product meets the plan. I plan to, I actually plan to produce like five thousand or five, one thousand, one thousand bread in a day. So I am checking the control here, like, have we produced more than that or produced less than that? Or the, the bread that we're producing or quality, is it the quality, you know, you understand? So this, in this space, I'm trying to ensure the bread has quality. Understand? The quality of the bread is consistent. So because, because I want to produce five hundred or one thousand bread. I should not reduce the quality or I should, it should not, it should not be tasting different. You know, there are some people like that, right? Some people that if they have to cook small, it would be nice, but when they cook big, large food, rubbish. Yeah, so it's just like that. So you just have to know how to plan. So if I'm cooking five eggs and I'm putting two, if I'm taking four noodles, right? And I'm putting all the, the seasonings inside. If I'm cooking eight, it may likely like, maybe it may not be as good as when I cook four. But then at least, you have poor word organizing, you didn't organize it very well. If you do it well, you still get nice taste. So we also have uh, in the, one of the function again is, is what behavior. Now, the video, there's this one here, it's just like managing people, managing people, motivation, teamwork, right? This is just what I say. You say here, operational managers are concerned with how, how, how their effort to plan, organize, control. Affect human behavior. Do you understand? They also want to know how the behavior of support make can affect management plan, organizer and trainer. Their interests lies in decision-making behavior. So just to manage people, motivation, motivate people and all that. So here we, the last one is the model. As operational managers, plan, organize and control the conversion between two processes. They encounter many problems and must make many decisions. So they can simplify their difficulties using models like aggregate planning models, fakes. For examine how best to use existing capacity to ensure thing, you get? So, so here it's basically like, what is telling you just about using some tools to make decisions. Understand? One of it could be like a break even analysis or linear programming, which is a part of this class. If you go down, 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 you see linear program, you cannot escape that. If I had someone push a paper like as one, and I saw linear programming, I was like, wow, this is, this is crazy. Yeah, but it's not already, yeah, it's something we can do together. So, uh, like it's kind of example, let me just give you also example that can just give us a whole idea of operational management. So, assuming, I want to start the, I have a restaurant, let me now say like you know, I have a restaurant. So in the planning stage, I'm going to design, I'm going to decide the menu and the number of meals. The menu here, I'm going to, and the plan, I'm going to decide the menu like, okay, I wonder, okay, if I have, I'm going to have egg mousse soup. And uh, egg mousse soup, I go to the food and the swallow, have a bar, have a food, all those things. Do you get? So when I come to, I'll go to organizing now, I have to arrange the kitchen, the chair, the suppliers and all that. Now, in the control phase now, I'll check if the food tastes the same, then. Check, we go to restaurant, notice chicken problem, we will go to their restaurant, even if you go to Abuja, their chicken is tasting the same. If you go to Lagos, their chicken, go to my body, tasting the same, I'll be like, this guy's chicken. That is, I play control, they have control that test, it's cool, for them, that was their market. And then the customer contact, the customer satisfy all these things. So, just something nice, it's very, very nice, right? So in summary now, operational management ensures the input. It ensures the input, efficient transformation and give you the output. So like I said, operational management is just a process whereby, you, you as an operational manager or whoever. It takes the company's resources and transforms it into something, something that people can pay for. It's very simple, that's operational management. So we have products, services and also, so like I said, we are going to, there were so, there were questions here, like, there were so many. Questions here, so you say, right, and essay, and the concept of operational management. So have time, you write the essay, well, I mean, I don't, but it's, it's a nice question, but it's something really simple, yeah? So, here now, it's not like, the essay is not going to be like writing to, to go against or oppose, you know? So basically, what we can even say here, you can say like, operational management involves planning, organizing, controlling the process. That converts inputs, right? I can just think of it that convert input into what, output. So when you talk about the input, you're talking about the materials, label, capital, everything together. Then it converts it into what, it convert the input into the output. The output here can be the goods or services, simple stuff.
Please, I have a question. Please, what do they mean by features of operational management? Is that the same as functions?
That was a function, where, is it a question?
Yes, there's a question there that said, uh. Yes, yes.
Identify the basic functions of, it's just simply, that's the features of operational management. So we have the.
Is it the same as functions? That's my question, is it the same as functions?
Yeah, that's the functions.
All right, all right.
Planning, organizing, controlling, behavior and use of models.
Then the models, did you take it? Sorry, because I didn't get, I didn't get it properly.
Yeah, I've said, the model here is basically like a systematic way of doing things, yeah? So I can use a model to predict something, I can use a model to monitor my, my production, right? So that is why I said, in, in part of this class, there's a part of it that is talking about linear programming. It's a system way of monitoring the operation like that. So that's it, that really gets the. Model just, it's kind of system stuff, like predict for new, help you to sell stuff. Okay, so one of the other question here is what, again, identify the basic features of operation, simple. Planning, uh, organizing, controlling.
Controlling behavior models.
Our models, thank you, that's all. So another question here said, discuss, uh, explain the contribution of production management and operational management to the success of a business operation. So what's the answer? Now, you can, that, we look at, we're looking at this point, we can say, okay. Explain the contribution of production management and operational management to the success of business. Now, here, we, the question here is just trying to help us to understand the things you consider. Right? When, when the things you consider, or the thing that contribute to the production. Now, one of it, I said, you consider costs, reduction back, cost to minimize cost. Because if I want to produce, I don't want to produce and lose so much, I have to consider the cost. And I also consider the quality, how to, how can I improve on the quality? And also, I can look at the increased productivity, how my staff are working, how all those things. I will ensure customer satisfaction, how my customer are satisfied with what I have. And then profit, how do I boost my profit? How do I improve my competitive advantage? All these things, this is just what it's, maybe, these are the contributions of production and. Operational management to business success. Because by the time you have this to check, you're good, the costs, you have to minimize your costs. You have to improve your quality. So saying, likes, I don't know, like someone like, I like, I usually like buy quality stuff. For real, I like my quality stuff. So even if it's not like, if it's a spicy, but I cannot afford it now, I can save some, 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 I can now just buy. I, I prefer to buy like one quality shoe and to buy a fake shoe and be using them. Just buy one quality shoe and be using, so everybody can say, ah, this guy have only one shoe, I'm okay, like that. Yeah, but let me just have the shoe that is good, so we move on. So another question here is, uh. Why operational management is relevant to managers in other organization functions? Why is it relevant? Why is operational management relevant to managers? Do you even understand that question?
Who, me?
No, like everybody, do you understand what this question mean? Why is operational management is relevant to managers in other organization functions? Now, what it means here now, you are talking about operation, you are looking at. When you're talking about uh, operational management, people feel operational management is basically about production, it's in the production line. So let's see, people that are into production or manufacturing or people that works in the, maybe, if you're talking about bread company now. They're talking about operational management, people think it's about the people that are doing the production of bread. But then they're asking that, why do you think that operational management is relevant to managers in other functions? Now, when we talk about other functions here, we are looking at marketing. Uh, in the same bread company, they have a department that is for marketing, they have a department for finance, they have a department for H R logistics.
Logistics.
Do you understand? So, how do you think this guy, how do you think operational management is relevant to these people to other functions of your business? Do you understand?
Yes.
So, it's very clear, like, for me, I can say it's simple, yeah? So I will just say it, because, you know, marketing, all this marketing, H R, logistics, all this guy, they still depend on the operation. For, for what? For successful delivery of products and services, they depend on the operational management, right? So they depend on the operation, every, because if I, if you are not producing. You can, you have nothing to sell, you have nothing to market. If you're not producing, if I'm not producing, you are not making money, they cannot be employing people, H R department cannot be there. Logistics, if you're not producing, you don't have anybody to supply anything to anybody. So these guys depend on the success of the operation, right? So now, operational management now affect the cost, the quality and also the schedule, everything just comes back to this guy. Because it is the number of pressure, it's how the pressure is going that we even know the workforce that we need, all those things. So it's actually relevant to them. So you just know, like this kind of question now, you can, let's understand it comes to the question. Like this, this thing I just said, is just something I just reasoning myself, I just reasoning, I don't know whether it's invisible. But if I check and see, maybe it's different. They said, uh, describe the historical evolution of operational management and the significance of the key event. I don't know, check the internet and then you can just check that. So we said, number seven, set decisions, management are an important tool to an executive in an organization, discuss that. Okay, so now, this like here, it can write as much as you want, but I can just say, decision. Decision management are an important tool to an executive in an organization. So what this means, decision determine direction, right? If uh, decisions determine the di- direction, where are we going? And also, the decision also helps us to allocate resources. It is a decision that help us to solve problem, set some important priorities, things that are important to us. And also manage risks, all those things. Now, who this, and if you make decisions, if you make a good decision, it can lead to effective operation and organizational success. But if you make a bad decision, you know what happens, it's actually going to affect everything. So, the reason is asking that, decision in management are important to, to an executive in. So it's just for you, it's just like a topic for you to go discuss. So you can write how decision is important to the organization, to the executive of the business. So it just to say, like, got decision determine the direction, allocate resources and all those things. We make decision to stop key, this machine to go there, the decision to say, okay, this is, machine should not work, this one, I know. So this is like, you know, this is like a real stuff, that just think, 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 think it and you can answer it. Compare this, the similarities and differences between production and service operation. Actually, they gave us example and, and uh, assignment on this. So this is very simple, we have already seen this in the main course, like in the, where we are talking about operation and. In production and service operation, and now very simple. I can say, this guy, the difference is that, production is, in production operation. We have tangible products. And then, do you hear, we have tangible products and then we have low customer contact. Being people that does production in the business, they, they don't even know who, they don't even know who the customers are, for real. They don't really interact with customers, they are always in the operation, in the production room, they are there. But the people that are focused on the customer service, is there's a customer department that does one now, is operation two. But then now, this is now, the operation in that area now is not production operation, it is service operation. So they are the one that handle the customer interaction. So for instance now, my, we are, we have operation department, yeah? Where, operation department, it is terminal that manage all the operation, and then we have the customer department. These people, they are the one, the customer department, it had more with the customer. But then in their, on to their, operation is going on there, but this is service operation and their input is intangible. You understand? It's, if I'm talking to a customer, can you touch what I'm saying? No. But this person that is on the operation side, that is maybe somebody in operation, that is production. They are doing bread and they are touching it, they can even eat the bread, you know, they can smell it. But somebody in H R does not even know how the bread smell until maybe he's eating it. But this operation is going there. So, I can say, okay. Operation, the difference now, operations, a production operation is has tangible products. While service operations have intangible product. Just say tangible, uh, if I said intangible, make, it makes no sense. It's an intangible output because tangible product is operation. But intangible output, service operation. And the service operation have high customer uh, interaction while the. The production operation has a low, uh, just say, low customer contact or action. This is English, anyhow I want to write it, write it, right? Your nature will understand, if I'm your nature, I will understand, yeah, we all understand. Okay, so I think this is, uh, we are making progress, right? So. And the nature of the writing English, English deeds, the operation and function and the nature of operations management. So what this guy is trying to say here, I think he's just trying to say, you should define the rule or like. The, the responsibility of operational manager. Because this is elicits the operations, functions and the nature of operations manager's job. Very simple now, that is, just describe the operation function and nature of the operational manager's job. So I can say, operational manager here, it's um, is someone that oversees the production, it's. Not the production, let's say the process. Now, the process that in a population, in a, in a production, there's a lot of processes that are involved in the production. Because for me to produce a bread, the process start from getting even the flour, getting everything together. It can start, the person can even start from when I get to the market to buy the flour, buy the sugar, buy everything, I bring it back. So, the operational manager here, it oversees the process, the manpower, the quality, everything, inventory, schedule. Which, if you have operational manager in this class, can he, he knows what the person does in his work, yeah? So, but I feel operational manager is someone that oversees the process. The process, the manpower, the people that are doing the production and also the quality, because everybody here is. You know, we, we go to have people like the quality managers, we want to have inventory managers, but these people are all responsible to their operational manager. So they cannot, so him, now this, this what they call, eh, 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 eh. There's something that is called V R C like this, in management uh, charts. So this V R C actually is something like this, so it has, so what this means is like. I'm going to have a child like this, eh? Okay, so I can list the taxi. For instance, I can have rice for, for this, for this uh, for a production. Yeah, so what it means is, I can have, so I said, okay, get, get sugar. For a production, yeah, so what it means is, I can have, so I say, okay, get, get sugar. So I want to take Gary. So, this is a process now, I want to get the process of how to make Gary for myself. So the Gary now, I'm going to say, okay, get Gary. It's a tag, this is a tax, get sugar. Get, uh, uh, what again? Milk if I have, and then also water. And then, um. Um, what again? That's all, okay, let's stop for now. So now, this is a process, yeah? So now, I'm going to have the, the, now, this is going to be the actors. The actors here are the people that are going to do this. So the actors could be, this is me. Now, if I have a child, this is my child, and if I have, eh. Have a child, now, I'll explain why I put the child there, and I'll have, uh, let's say, I have a wife. So now, what is having now, these are the actors, and then the person that wants to take the Gary is me, yeah? So now, it means that, this, what it mean, this is, this, this recipe means, is the, who is responsible. Right, I want to take Gary now, I want to get sugar, who is responsible to get the sugar for me? I can say my child is responsible, go and get sugar for me, he's responsible. And then, the person that is accountable is my, I can say my wife is accountable for, for sugar, because if there is no sugar in the, Gary in the house. I can ask her why there's no sugar. So, she's not responsible, yeah? I can, okay, she's still, she's not responsible to get the sugar for me, but if there's no sugar, she's accountable for that. I'll ask her, my, why is this, there's no Gary, and you did not tell me. So me now, what do I, what am I doing here? Uh, I am also responsible and accountable. Because I am responsible to get the, the Gary, and I'm also accountable for the Gary too. And so do my wife is accountable for the Gary, I'm also, so, this is like, so what I'm saying, what I'm trying to explain that in operational management is. You can have different people, operational manager can have every other person working under him. But let's just say, he's, if you do a, a recipe chart like this, he will be accountable for everything. When it comes to operational line, he's accountable. But then, maybe the operating quality manager is, uh, is responsible for the quality of the product. And the marketing manager is responsible for the marketing of the product. But then, the operational manager is also accountable, because he's the one that go to meet with the management, to take the management after. Okay, this is how everything is going, you get it? So, stuff like that. So if you just understand the process, yeah, I know, I believe you can, to be able to explain it in a way that you understand. So we have, uh, he, explain the difference between micro and macro operations. Do you guys understand what this means like that? So he said, uh, describe, uh, describe some of the macro operation in the university. And discuss the relationship between the internal and external customers, suppliers. Okay, so, now, the micro operation, it's, it's, uh. The, the macro operation involve like individual process, right? That is the micro operation, it involve the individual process. Now, when it comes to the macro, uh, operation, it involve the whole system, just like the.
Did you say persons as in human being?
Now, this is individual, no, the individual here must not be a person, right? Now, let me explain. You've seen the example of the, this university now. If I said the macro operation is the whole system, that means, I'm talking about the university as a whole. Now, when I talk about like the individual processes, now here, I'm thinking about the process. Process here could be registration, library, hostel. Understand, all this are macro operations inside the whole macro operation, which is the university. We can have the, the registration, the library, the hostels. I do, do you get the point now?
Yes.
Exactly, so, it's, uh, so. So they said, uh, describe the, some of the macro operation in the university, and so, and we can look at the. Like that university now, we can look at student, right, we can look at students. Okay, I don't understand, I don't know, I will check, I will check it. But then, they asked us another question, they say, draw a hierarchy of operation for a small manufacturing company. And discuss the various operations. The hierarchy, okay, I can, so this, this can be simple, yeah? So for instance, just like the way I was, uh, I was explaining, so let's assume that we have. Uh, an operation, we have a, a manufacturing company now, right? So, basically, we're going to have like a CEO, then a CEO will come to operational manager. Operational manager. So this is the hierarchy, operational manager. Right, so, if the operational manager here, is going to have, operational manager has, uh. A production, we're going to have like a production, it's not going to be going. He has his department under him, that is, operation department. Now, inside the operation, inside the production department, yeah? He's going to have, um, inside the production department, he's have. He have like people that operate the machines, machine operators, right? And then, inside the, the same production, this thing, we're going to have like quality control inside. So people that, so, I'm just thinking, you can think of another process. So inside the operation there, operational manager also is going to have what is called, let's talk about logistics. Or can we just say supply chain? Because supply chain and logistics are kind of two different things in somehow. Right, so it's from where this thing is coming from. So the supply chain here can handle, um. Let me look at supply chain. The supply chain here handles things like procurement, yeah? So we'll talk about procurement, inventory and all that. So, from here, then you get back to logistics, I guess. So, you look at this together with me, and if it's, if it's fine, if it's not fine. So, in the logistics now, we look at packaging, packaging of our product, right? And then we look at distribution of the product. Distribution. So we have, we have, so now, look at, we have the CEO, which is Oga. Then the operational manager, the operational manager have production department, that manage, that have operation, they have nation operators, quality control. And then, sorry, quality control here, and then after the quality control, and then we look at the supply chain. Here we look at the procurement, people that buy stock, buy the materials for production. And then we have inventory, and then we have logistics that have those, handling production and all that. So if it's something, you can draw diagram like that. So now, do you think this is actually? This is funny to me. So do you think this is actually like, doesn't make any sense to you? If you're a lecturer, would you mark me like, you give me ten of a ten or five of a ten?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, like, is this the proper hierarchy or is it just something you just formed up?
Yeah, I just, I just think of it in my head, like, I've not seen it even in this book. So I just think of it in my head.
Okay.
But now.
I think it's something, I think it's something, it's not, at least this is, um. I think this should be more than half, half the ma.
A small.
Sorry.
I can, and discuss the various positions. Uh, I've not even discussed.
They should not bring this question, I beg, I don't even dare dig, they should not bring this question.
Okay, we'll send a petition to your lecturer.
Is there anything like hierarchy inside that material?
I, I don't.
Because I can't see any, oh, I can't see any, I'm just asking, maybe mine.
See, now, see, those things, the acts in those question, it's not really the things you see directly in this question, in this material, can you see?
Okay.
Nothing, you can't even see this stuff. Yeah, but now, they ask the question based on the fact that they believe you have read the matter and you understand it. So you should use the knowledge that you have, that you have bought it from the matter, to answer these questions. Not really like you copy the answers from the material and paste it down, do you get the point? I good. Okay, so, yeah, so that's a funny, yeah, so we look at the, the next thing, which is supposed to be. Uh, what we'll be looking at today is the, our, what again? Study two, I'll talk about operations strategy. Now, here, we look at the, the operations strategy here, basically. You should, you can believe that, every organization need the strategy, right? Every company, every business, a winning strategy. Now, a strategy, a long-term plan for how it will compete. Because, as I'm talking to now, every business have someone that is doing that same business. So you need a strategy, right? Need a strategy that can help you to compete and survive and also grow. Because if you don't have a strategy telling you, somebody will just kick you out, and then you, you'll be in the business, but nobody will know. That's true, so, we're looking at the operational strategy, yeah? So we just kind of.
Operational strategy.
Yeah. So we'll just look at it, uh, small, 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 small.
Funny, funny, where did you see operational strategy again? Are we on the same page?
Okay, no, no, I was just trying to give like, I've not defined operational strategy, I was just.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is there any, okay.
Okay, so I'll just like give you like an overview, like, you believe that, you believe with me that every organization, every business need a strategy. Right?
Yes.
Everybody need a strategy. In fact, even as, and me, as individual, we need strategy to survive. So, every business need a strategy, and why do they need a strategy? They need a strategy that can help them in a long-term plan, right? A long-term plan for how it will compete, how they can survive, because. A, a business can get to a point that they will have competitors that even.